Okay, are we all ready? So I will bring the June 20th, 2018 Joint Municipal Board and Village of Lava Board of Trustees Meeting to order. And could we all rise for the presence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, open dialogue with the municipal board. We have our, you know that you had a meeting, is it last Tuesday? We have a bond resolution?
Municipal board, Joe.
No, no.
What?
Well, everybody, you said usable. Was there any more interesting?
Did I get one?
Danny?
Sorry. This is just our, this is our resolution. Do we accept the bond resolution? So essentially, are we all set with that from EFC?
Yes. EFC has approved it, it's ready for adoption. It was adopted by a role called work.
Okay. And do you know what the changes were, Joe? I know we're kind of mid shift here.
The amount was a critical change, I believe, increasing the amount of the bond resolution.
And then just making sure that Water Street and River Street were...
That was the hang up at EFC.
That was with our seeker.
Right. They had a hang up with that at EFC with Mark Doolittle that he's on.
So what is the amount on the bond resolution?
Eighteen million, nine hundred fourteen thousand, nine hundred ninety dollars. That's based on the revised budget, the current revised budget.
And I know you went over some numbers the other night. Our board has not gone over those numbers. Do we wish to do that?
You want to look at the water service that I was talking about?
I think so.
Yeah, remember we'll hand out.
With our, how everything looks.
Yeah, like the spreadsheets we went through for brevity. So basically, I think everybody's pretty much familiar with those by now. So what we did this time was just print off the important sheets of what's going to happen to water, what's going to happen to sewer. So Kevin will hand those out and we'll kind of go through this. So the first sheet on the top, we've gotten a little bit, top five streets financial breakdown. I think Jeff Smith must be coming, but just keep going through this anyways to keep things rolling. But this is just kind of a breakdown to show how we got to the bond resolution amount, which is at the bottom, third line to the bottom. But just to go back in time a little bit, we bid the project, open bids on May 17th, and there's actually three contracts to get us to the total amount. So we got, everybody knows Highlander, but general contract, we got a minute there, fourteen point six. We got the electrical contract two, FPK, a hundred and thirty-three thousand, six hundred. Plumbing contractor, FPK, actually, I had it backwards on my sheet, sorry. Electrical's New Century, plumbing's FPK. Anyways, plumbing contracts, five hundred twenty-four thousand. So the total actual construction cost of those contracts, about fifteen, two eighty-eight million. So that's kind of a baseline number for the construction work. But as you'll see, there's certain amount, or certain items that we have to procure directly, and we have those kind of listed in there. So that'd be like your national grid work, we have, this is work that basically has to be done by these guys. The railroad's going to come in, they got to do that, the repair work with the restoration of the crossing. We got the water tank, the aeration system in there for project unit. And then we got SCADA upgrades that need to be done. So that's about three hundred twelve thousand. We got a 10% contingency in there, gets us to about seventeen one six for your construction total. We add in your engineering services, the legal, and that gets you with the eighteen nine one four that we were just talking about, the bond resolution. So we'll be back next, next time, we're going to have to look at the engineering. We had to add in there the inspection time because as we went through bidding process, we learned about the phase in the project, about what we're going to do, like two streets, one summer, maybe two the next, and then one. We have the exact schedule figured out here pretty soon when Highlander gets us their construction schedule. But anyways, you get, based on all these numbers in here, we have a sewer and water split, which is important. We looked at the bids, looked at the aligned items that pertained to the sewer side things, and then all the aligned items that pertained to water. There's technically two separate projects. So we got the water side and the sewer side, that's what we'll look at in these budget sheets in a second. So we got the fourteen million approximately on the sewer side, about seventy-four percent. Seventy-four point three, and the remaining water total, about twenty-five point seven percent. So the actual total, the last time we looked at the budget, if you remember back, we had about eighteen point six, and we came in, total about eighteen point nine. So we're actually within about one point eight percent of that estimate. It wasn't bad from that perspective. The actual split, I want to say before, was like one-third water, two-thirds sewer. Now the bids came in, it's about a quarter water and the rest sewer. So the next sheets, the other sheets, if you flip over, might have to help in here with the next one. Probably, we're going to be looking for the sewer, sewer breakdown, this one's the simplest one.
Yeah, for the five streets?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if you remember these, the pie charts and bar graphs and things that we, we went through for our brevity sheets, the actual amounts, we put back in here, the increased amount directly from the previous sheets. We input that in there, and with the sewer rates that we previously discussed, with the dollar thirty-nine, and then the dollar eighty-six residential, we're able to cover the amount of the five-streets sewer side of the project. With a safety net in there, you're surplus of about eighty thousand a year. So I think we're good on sewer side, still with the rates, with the way they sit. And again, that'll be something, I guess when Jeff gets here, I don't know if he's got a recommendation, if you want to change the rates on that or not. But it looks like we're technically good on that side for the moment.
And this is how it currently is with craft being charged by what they use?
This is the dollar thirty-nine, one point one million gallons a day. That's what we plugged in there, as we plugged in previously when we went over this.
Right, but we'll have that discussion more later if there are just any questions on that. But we know that that's coming anyways.
I mean, again, we've been over this a number of times, so if there's any questions, that's fine. But basically, we plugged in the increased amount for the sewer budget, and it looks like it's going to be able to support that with the rates that we had in there. The water is a little bit different. If you want to flip to those ones, there's, there's two of those. It's basically, what we did in here was, this one includes the debt for, the new debt for the now only five-streets project, but also includes the poly unit potential purchase that we're looking at. Because remember the previous meeting, a couple meetings recently, we've been discussing that. So we plugged in, basically, some numbers that Jeff Smith provided us with. He's recommended we look at a fifteen-year note on the poly unit. So we plugged that in along with the generator purchase that's up there now. So that, we have at about one point two million for the poly unit package, we'll call it. And then the rest of the debt's about four point eight five million. That's, that'll be true to that total debt number, that says six million, six point zero five million.
You can take that down, you have probably right, I'm sorry, one point?
One point two, we have budgeted for the poly unit purchase.
Yeah.
So it's about, we'll say about a million dollars for the unit itself, and then the rest would be for the generator.
Yeah, and then what was the other?
The five streets component of the water.
The five streets, okay.
About four million, eight hundred fifty-two thousand. So with that total debt, we plugged everything in with the existing debt, and projecting everything with the five streets debt is projected at, it's a thirty-year note, at lower interest rate, and then we've got, and I want to say it's one point eight percent in interest for the thirty-year note. And the, and the rest of it is plugged in, the one point two million is a fifteen-year note. That one's a little higher, it's around three percent or something like that. But we can get detailed information on that if you need it. We plugged in the O and M and everything, and ran the numbers again. And basically, depending on what your largest user consumes, as we've seen over the spreadsheets many times, that is very heavily depending on where, where we end up with that rate. So if they're using the million gallons a day, so there's one scenario where it shows million, and there's another scenario where it shows a five hundred eighty thousand gallons a day usage for your largest user, and if they continue to use what they're using right now, we're basically fine. We've got a pretty good surplus in there to do the five streets water and the poly purchase. But if we go with the five eighty that we've been told, that requires a rate increase. So upwards of thirty percent if they actually use the five eighty. But again, when Jeff comes, supposed to be showing up, I think the recommendation's going to be, maybe the idea would be to, maybe the answer's going to be somewhere in the middle. Maybe it's not going to be the five eighty, maybe it's not going to stay at one million. It's likely to fall somewhere in the middle if it comes down. So we could look at doing like a five percent increase now, and then incrementally increase if need be, just in the case that their demand just drops off. It's supposed to happen, or has been told to us it's going to happen, so.
Have we actually seen that happen with our usage?
No. In fact, usage is higher than it's ever been. I'm sorry? In the last two weeks, there were a couple of days where there were over a million gallons. One day, I believe it was close to one point two. But if you average it out over three hundred sixty-five days, it may be seven hundred and a half. It, it, it fluctuates. Weekends, they're not using, we're doing a lot of work on weekends right now because the demand is, is down on weekends.
So we're not really going to have a good handle on how much is going to be used for a while either, anyway?
I don't, no, no, we're not.
Do we just increase water rates to ten percent? That what we did right within the last, it's for this billing cycle, was that the past?
We just got the ten percent the last billing cycle.
Right, billing cycle, we just, they just were billed with the ten percent increase.
Did they have to be done before June of last year, June 1st of last year, something like that? Or was it, for us to, it wasn't the following?
October.
Was it that time?
So they just got billed for the last six months of usage.
I just wondered over the...
Right, October and May?
We have to do it before they, they use any water.
Yeah.
Well, when did we pull that in, back in like June, wasn't that for you, October?
Ryan, was there ever a scenario, um, see you down here, you've got one million gallon, then you cut it pretty much in half to five hundred and eighty thousand? Listening to Tom, I just wondered if they, maybe over a period of the year, if they'd be more realistic in like maybe seven fifty?
Right.
I've just wondered what that would do.
Yeah, that's what we're, we're kind of saying, I mean, it's likely going to fall. We can understand, we didn't run that one, we brought all our computers and stuff so we can do that. But it was just a conversation of if you wanted to kind of ramp it up, knowing that you're going to fall somewhere in there. But I think the, probably the important thing is to kind of stop the bleeding with the rental. When you get that out, it cuts your, your outlay greatly.
Off the basis.
Right.
And do we know that we can get credit back for most of our rental on that? Is that still?
Five months.
You can get it back for five months towards the purchase of the unit?
Yeah, we used the latest information we had from Paul on that.
What's the lifespan of a bond unit?
It's hard to say, I mean, a lot of technology in the unit, but I talked to Jeff Smith, I think that's why we kept it to ten to fifteen years, because we shouldn't go past that. I mean, it should last longer, but I mean, it's kind of like buying a car, it can only go up to seven years. Because a lot of times, it's a life cycle at that point, you turn it over. So I mean, it's kind of shoot from the hip, right, fifteen years, ten to fifteen years, somewhere in there. Should be able to get to one, somewhere in that range. It's hard to say, volume of water, how you take care of it, anything, just like, just like a car.
General maintenance?
Yeah, if you take care of it really well, it'll last a million miles, you know, but not like it.
Most of the, most of the pieces in the trailer, when you see it, are components pumped to be taken out and replaced. The filtration units themselves can be, will be, you know, those are a normal wear item, and they just get taken out and replaced. The bigger thing is, if you purchase the trailer as it is, we're going to need to get it off the ground. Right now, it's, it's on jacks.
So we factored in that cost plus putting some sort of building around it?
We have not done a building around it.
Do we wish to do a building around it?
At some point, probably.
Yeah, everything all last last winter.
There are other facilities where this is what they use for their, all of their water treatment. So, can I just question, well, it, it really makes sense to, I think, I was going to speak, I think it makes sense to purchase a poly unit rather than renting it. Whether we end up keeping that specific unit or not, we, we, we feel confident that this is a solution to being able to filter the maximum amount of water that we can filter in a much faster pace, to be able to react to supply and demand in our system. We're still working on improving the filtration process. That's, but that's a whole other entity and, and all different addition to the entire system, right?
Right.
But that, but, but the poly unit hasn't filtered, it's myself awful to say it this way, but it, it hasn't put out any dirtier water than what our sand beds do.
Much better.
It's been the same.
Much better quality.
You know, it, it, it has improved even though they, Department of Health still wants us to continue looking into these other applicants.
Right, don't forget, Department of Health is looking at different, the poly trailer is for filtration, and we're going to run the pilot for disinfection by products. As it is right now, it will not help with disinfection by products. That's the pilot that we're going into with pre-treatment with the coagulant. So there's two pilots, the initial pilot was using the poly trailer as for filtration, and that's been successful. And the second pilot that we're about to start is for disinfection by product treatment.
And then Department of Health, okay, does, do you have an opinion? Let's see, I've got your results for the pilot.
Yeah, I talked to DOH about that, and I said we were, we're okay to purchase just that. There's no, no guarantee that you'll be able to keep it, it's just like anything else. So they could come up with a requirement down the road that they want you to pursue the groundwater. And we talked about that in our meeting, municipal board meeting there, where you could go down this path to the pre-treatment, but ultimately, you might end up with groundwater down the road. I don't know, five years, ten years, who knows? But in the meantime, they keep saying, you know, your DVPs got to be taken care of. You're not going to be able to get your DVPs or your groundwater solution by the end of the summer. So you better do something, and that's what we're doing with that pre-treatment.
Do we have to send out bids for the poly unit purchase?
Not sure, there, there may be a way to buy it directly. I'm going to take a look, look at the law on that and do that account. It might, based upon the fact that you're getting a credit for which things need, there may be a way to buy it directly, without doing competitive bidding.
Okay.
But I'll get back to that.
Yeah, if you want to give a hand, call two jobs to discuss the additional costs, like if you did get more equal, like an acne unit or something came in, you'd have to replonate the additional cost. Yeah, I think we, I think in order to do it directly first, we have to be able to justify that it's the best value you can get based upon all this factors.
We can help you with that.
Yeah, okay.
So do we, I guess, do we intend to make a motion tonight for the poly unit purchase if it's feasible legally through the village? Or are we not ready to do that?
You'd probably need an answer to this question.
Okay.
Which you'll have by your next meeting.
Or by their next meeting, so they can recommend it to us.
Which one's their next meeting?
Second Tuesday of every month. July tenth.
Should we wait to the next meeting, or call a special meeting once he gets the answer? What you're looking at. If you wait a month, it's going to cost the village an over seventy-five thousand dollars. I mean, every month you wait, it's costing them seventy-five thousand dollars.
Forty-five, Joe.
I say, why?
You got, you got the generator, plus you got the...
It's not seventy-five, it's...
Forty-five.
It's, it's forty.
With only forty-five hundred?
Forty-five thousand.
For what?
Thirty for the trailer and another forty-five hundred for the generator, and then the power and chemicals.
Still forty-five thousand.
That stuff that's done in checks, so you've got to pay that back. Hey, fifteen days is half that, I don't mind a special meeting.
I would ask, are we all, are we all on board with that this is, right? We're all in agreement that this is the way to keep moving forward?
We made a motion for the board last month, the purchase of the...
Okay.
In the worst case scenario, you're going to have to competitive with a bid, and nobody's going to...
We discussed the idiot argument as well, and said that if something were to happen to this, we would be back in a bad situation again, so this is why we were wondering if it had to go to bid.
There may be a way around that, that's what I'm hoping for.
Well, I guess my question is, since the municipal board has already recommended it, we wouldn't have to recommend it again.
That's right, so it'll be just up to us, okay. So the poly unit, we're all, we're all set with that? Everybody agree on that? Any more discussion that we need to have?
We just need to dot our i's, cross the t's on the purchase, and just as an update on the pre-treatment system, we got a couple of comments back from DOH. We're going to address those and hopefully get that process rolling here pretty quick, I hope.
That's already been approved by both boards.
The process with Department of Health?
Yeah, no, the, the actual construction and installation for pre-treatment. We're just, I think Ryan's just giving an update that we're, we're waiting, that they got comments back from DOH, and then as soon as they address those comments, Department of Health says go ahead, we can start.
With adding the, the other things that we planned on, okay. So then what happens if those, those additions to our water filtration don't correct the problem?
We're distancing the pilot, that's unlikely, especially given that we have other improvements in the five-streets project, the help addresses DVPs as well.
Well, this is not, I mean, it's not new technology that we're trying, it's something that other people do as well, correct?
Yeah. Did you want to discuss the, the potential with Jeff Smith about the, the water situation? I'm sorry, the rates, can we kind of just talk to him?
Oh, yeah, sorry, I didn't see him.
Yeah, I talked to them about, I think we're good on the sewer side, Josh?
Yes.
As far as the water goes, depending on their largest industrial user, you might want to look at a five percent increase and then see how it goes over time financially?
Yeah, that would be my recommendation, is that we know that you're going to have costs incurred for the next phase, the water plant project coming up down the road. There are indications from Kraft, the feeling from the company is their usage is going to decrease, although we haven't seen that today. But, you know, that, that has been one of the, one of the indications from them in running. So our feeling is, is that there's going to be increased costs coming down the road in OAC. And I would recommend that we gradually start increasing rates every year we look and see what's happening. But if we start now, I think it will eliminate a shock in the future for everyone, all users, if we begin increasing rates to five percent. Do look around, see what is actually happening. Of course, on the water side especially, because of the volume of the usage from the production that goes into the craft facility. the Kraft facility, it'll give us a chance to see what it really settled on.
Now, this recommendation, Jeff, was for the water rate increase?
Yeah, for the water.
So we, we're alone, so?
Um, I think it's a little early yet for sewer because we really don't know what phase two is gonna look like then. I would see another, a five percent increase down the road for sewer, maybe next fiscal year. But until we get a better handle on what that is, what kind of programs might be out there available, you know, I think it's a little early yet on that. And, and that fund is holding up very nicely so far.
Are there other questions on the financial breakdown presented here on the sheets? That we think we need to go over?
I had a question on that. So, I'm gonna try to have this right in bond resolution. If we go forward with that, we still have like a thirty-day window that we have to wait?
Okay, it's gotta be subject to permissive recommendations, so you gotta wait thirty days. And then another twenty days, because after the thirty days run, you have to publish a staff notice.
Okay.
So you're really supposed to wait.
Even though it has been published before?
It's a fifty-day process.
It's just a minor change?
Yep.
So it's fifty days?
I'm changing, it's, it's on a fragment.
So that's gonna push the contract letting out for the five-street, it's fifty days.
Won't happen this year. It'll be in the ball.
We talked to Highlanders today, telling them that there's likely a window in there that they were gonna have to wait, and they're, they're looking to get their process going, and they're paperwork wise with their suppliers and everything. So they were looking for a, a letter of intent that once that process was complete and all the requirements were met, that basically it would be awarded at that point, which gives them confidence as far as things are gonna happen, so they can start things on there, even though it's not technically awarded yet. So, we have a sample letter that we think will work, so I don't know if that's something we can entertain or not. I don't know if you wanna look at it.
Yeah, I do want to.
Probably, yeah. It's just something we came up with last minute, we've done a college this morning, and we talked that through with them. Sounds like they're, they're comfortable, they have confidence, and the bill's going forward, the project.
Why don't you start with that proposal, then?
Okay.
Can we make a motion tonight if Attorney Russell is confident that it passes municipal muster? That we can send it out to them?
Yeah.
At the next meeting?
It'll be in a letter of intent, I think, right?
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
So then, as long as, as long as Joe approves of it, he can, I can go ahead and sign it and get it?
That's the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You guys are good with that?
It's for all the contracts or just Highlander's contract?
I think it should be for all the contracts because we have bids that are waiting for.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
I will, I will make my motion for that.
Is everybody still okay with all of that?
That's what my second meant to be.
I think that, I think the letter should specify that it's contingent upon, you know.
Or lower.
Okay, so we reviewed the finances and how this may affect user rates. One thing I need to mention is next Thursday, I'm hoping that there are a couple people who may be available at nine in the morning to meet with Brian Western from Kraft. From each board if possible. We started the memorandum of understanding, kind of going back and forth to try and get the wording correct. And to tell you very honestly, in, in a couple phone calls, he and I just said, oh my gosh, I can't do this much longer, how are you doing? He said, I agree. That's when we came up with the very generic memorandum of understanding from our last joint board meeting where we made all of the agreements for the one point one million gallons at a dollar thirty-nine. Whether they used it or not, it was the general overview of that letter to get to the state, which is something we needed to do. However, at that meeting, we did not specifically state with our motions when that was going to begin. And I think Brian and I both were under the impression that it would begin in November. And I know there's been different discussion at different board meetings about when to start that rate. I don't know if they've been given their new permit, new levels in it. But I think that we had discussed that that would be better for their budgeting purposes. And because they really didn't feel that the sewer portion of five streets, and this is something we clearly disagree on, that the sewer portion of five streets was something that Kraft Heinz should be charged for and a part of paying for. We feel that they're part of the system and you're a user of the system. They also come back and say, but we just put our brand-new pole pipe in. There, you know, there's, there's the, that is one thing that we're definitely not coming along on. So my question to all of you is, and, and part of the idea was that they understood that we would have engineering costs for phase two, which is part of something that they felt very strongly they financially should support and we had, we allowed the contributor for. And knowing that even though phase two is not really here yet, they understood building up some fund balance to be able to support their project. I would ask all of you what your perceptions are on that? And billing them at the one point one at a dollar thirty-nine? What's the start for the May bill?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
We have a motion to correct to, to approve these minutes. We haven't approved these minutes, and we're gonna discuss it.
Yeah, 'cause we're about to discuss the minutes.
And there is a correction on the first page. Motion by Trustee Solomon and seconded by Trustee Solomon. It's a paid judge, stand twelve per hour, so that's gonna be corrected. At the bottom of the first page. Tell that to my wife. So I don't know who seconded.
They'll need two trustees solvency.
Did you make the motion?
I, I did. But I'll make the motion to accept these minutes with Wendy going back and listening to the tape to see who seconded that motion on the first page.
So, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
So would we like to make a motion to approve the meeting from May thirty-first?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained?
Uh, the special meeting, I'll abstain, I was the one.
So, Mayor, may I now make?
Absolutely, please, we're having a discussion.
Our May sixteenth meeting, if you'll turn to page two, about three-quarters of the way down, it says Kraft MOU. And it states Attorney Gibo reported he spoke to Attorney Meyer to contact his Kraft Heinz and stated that he would not need another meeting. Mayor Smith to reach out to Kraft Heinz to check on the status of the MOU. The municipal board questioned when the village should be billing Kraft Heinz the new sewer rate because the MOU has not been signed. The motion was made by the mayor, seconded by me, to start billing Kraft Heinz the sewer usage rate at the new rate effective the first month after the addendum to the permit was received by Kraft Heinz in all in favor. Which precipitated the May thirty-first meeting where we decided to make the motion again and actually start charging them.
Have they received that new?
No, it will be the charges because we bill
Because of the bill, right.
The kind, we'll bill in June for their May usage, so that's what we intended to do, that's one thirty-nine for one point one.
Right. My question is, is do they have the paperwork for their new usage permit, their new user permit?
I don't know. Do they?
Because it's my understanding that they do now.
So, well, I never sent them a letter because it's in, there was a motion made by the municipal board and this board had a joint meeting for one point one million. There was a joint meeting. I think it was in March where I don't, I wasn't there. And you, you two boards, one made, municipal board made a motion and you guys seconded or made another motion and approved the one point one daily rate with a one point two million, or I'm sorry, one point one average and a one point two maximum.
Yes.
And the surcharges at the same time changed. So, and, and Brian and I discussed on the phone their surcharges. And he said, the way I have it figured with the new rates and with the new flow volumes, this is what our surcharges will be. And I, I told him that I hadn't had a chance to review it and do that math, but I believe that those surcharges were also passed at the following two meetings that you guys had.
Like, do they have?
The dollar thirty-nine and the one point one, one point two million gallons has already been approved. Have I written them the letter stating that? No, I have not. Because it was done in a resolution or a motion by both boards. All parties understood. Kraft, Brian understood for sure because his surcharges went way down. So they're, they're getting the benefit of the lower surcharge.
But don't, don't we usually send them like what they, what their permit is with us?
Their permits don't change if they have not, they're, they're in the rears. So when we write them a permit, if they don't receive a new one, they're bound to the old permit.
So I think, correct?
With the, with the exception of the, of the flow rates, we send them.
But weren't we also taking their, so it was fifteen hundred VOD versus something else?
That's the motion that these two boards made, yeah.
Right, so they don't have that permitted use as of right now with the fifteen hundred VOD. Yes, we made the motion, but do they have a permit from, for what is expected to go into our sewer plan?
They don't have, no, they don't have the actual new permit.
Okay.
They do not.
So that, I think, is what at the new rate effective the first month after the addendum to the permit was received by Kraft Heinz. They have not received that addendum to the permit.
Here's, here's my question. If indeed we've given them a break on the surcharge side and we want to do what's possibly correct, we certainly want to go back and charge them the fair surcharge if we're going to keep the water rate, the sewer rate where it is until November, whatever.
And I think that that's something that can certainly be discussed on Thursday morning.
That's what I would recommend.
But that, that is, my question is, somewhere with saying, okay, this is going to start at this date and here is your new permit, and because this is in effect now with this permitted use, this is the rate that's to be charged, has, didn't, just didn't happen. So I'm not, I'm not fully on board with with doing that personally because they have not received that paper. I know that we made motions, but...
But how many times are we gonna go back and forth with these guys? We've been dealing with this sewer for almost two years now. We've redone the plans, that the sewer plan numerous times because Kraft keeps changing what they want. Every time we redo something of the sewer plan, that's costing our taxpayers and users of the system big bucks because engineering, this is expensive. We, everybody came together that night, Brian said about what Tom has for me, he was agreeable to everything. I feel we're more than, and it was, the agreement was made in March, so it would have went into effect. Normally, when we do a water or sewer increase, it would be like in May or November. So it was done in plenty of time for it to go in May. I think the village has been more than fair, and I think we just need to stick to our guns and charge a dollar thirty-nine and move forward. If Kraft Heinz doesn't like it, that's too bad. I'm sick of spending money, more money and more money, and they keep reaping the benefits and our taxpayers keep getting it in the shorts.
So I know what's happened in the past, Joe, because you and I have been through the wringer along with a few others in this room on a very regular basis. I'm not disagreeing to anything that you said. However, moving forward, I think we need to have very clear communication with a few months' notice. One of the things that they were adamant about, and I feel they've come with a very generous offer, that they are willing to pay for the capacity whether they use it or not.
Can I ask a question?
So that it's a flat rate.
There's been a mediation committee formed, right? I'm assuming that this was discussed in mediation, was it or was it not? I, I'm not involved in it, and I know it's supposed to be confidential, but I think whatever was discussed in mediation needs to be taken into consideration, right, wrong, or different, whatever was said.
Right.
And I think that needs to be hammered out when you talk next Thursday.
That's what was in the memorandum of understanding.
Right, it was in the memorandum of understanding, but not a specific date for the start. My thing is, is they have said, we are willing to work with you, we know that this is partly, mainly, well, this is due to us, certain upgrades, okay, are due to their expansion, which we all agree is a very positive thing in our community. However, my thing is, is we need to communicate with them and we need to give them time to adjust their corporate accounts for whatever's happening or not happening. And I don't have the breakdown of whether surcharges cost more than the one point three-nine for the, the entire uses. I don't have that information at my fingertips. That's something else I still need to do a little research on. But moving forward, I think we need to make sure that the communication lines are open and whether it's, and I, and I highly suggest sending, sending letters and having a file with copy of those letters and the dates on them. Because that's how we know that they're getting what we're sending. If not, I don't, I don't know what's being communicated with them. I, I don't know. But it was a surprise. He, he's not necessarily opposed to it, and we're gonna discuss it again Thursday. As well as more details of the detailed memorandum of understanding. But Brian and I honestly together said, let's just drop this for a few months, take a break, and let's start back up again after spring, and it's spring.
I'll admit, I'll admit this as on the sewer side. But you gotta look at more than just the sewer, you gotta look at the whole big picture of the village here. And that's where I'm coming from. Because number one, we've just got done discussing the water in the pal unit. And I don't know how many people here realize it, but we have over seven hundred thousand dollars in reserves that could have been used in this five-streets project to pay for the water portion that now is not there because we had to take that money to pay for the pal unit and get everything running up there. And the only reason we needed that pal unit was Kraft Heinz needed water filtered faster. And they're not paying any more for their water than I am or anybody else is in the village. When it went up ten percent, it went up ten percent for them, no more. So I'm saying, they're getting a big benefit. So I'm saying they're getting a big benefit right there from village residents that are on the systems. It's just, they're getting a big benefit from the water side. I mean, you gotta look at it all. The village residents are constantly picking up for a multi-billion dollar company that should be able to pay their bills.
When we get our, when we get a loan to pay for that unit, does some of that money go back into our reserve account and then we pay it out slowly or no? We get a loan?
I think the-
Like reimbursing ourselves for the five streets and whatever, whatever we do now, it comes back into our-
And then Ryan probably knows better, but my understanding is there was an agreement that what you had paid in rent, part of that would be coming back. So of that, of that bond proceeds, you could reimburse yourself for those rental payments. Now, there was a sunset on how long that offer was out there and I, I am not up to date on if that offer's still on the table. Because I believe the sunset date, that was in writing before it actually passed. But there is that potential of reimbursement, rents paid. I think I've got that letter there. Is that for the PAL unit?
Yeah.
There was a, a credit, a reimbursement for rents paid?
It's five months. They're gonna give us a-
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And how many months are they paid?
Yeah, I think it's a one point two million dollar unit and they're gonna sell it to us for like around one year, or something like that.
Five months.
So I guess I would add, I'm, I'm sorry, Dan, do you want to ask a question?
I asked it.
Okay.
I asked it about what was discussed in mediation without getting into specifics because I know it's supposed to be confidential. Because I think you have to live by what, what is or isn't discussed in mediation.
Well, we kind of came up with our own ideas out of mediation. Because that was interesting. I don't think they were used to dealing with such intense, complicated corporate municipal matters. They were very nice and they helped us open the doors back up for communication, but- it wasn't quite what I had expected with definite direction and suggestions. If that makes any sense to you? Are you there for that?
Yep.
Are you in with us? Did you agree with that statement?
More or less, yeah. It wasn't exactly what I expected either, but I think with the basis of what the flow and price was discussed.
Right?
Yep.
So I, I say kind of fine.
Uh, we're just referring back to when we made the motion for those dollar thirty-nine, one point three nine and the one point one million. We've already made that motion. And when it takes effect, we feel we should- my personal feeling is we should get that addendum written up and hand it to them Thursday. I mean, all you gotta do is put paragraph down that it's addendum that means to their current, their current permit, correct? So if you hand it to them, say, "There, there it is."
This is what you're allowed to do.
And then see if he's gonna go ahead with paying it on the rate that we wanted it, the next, next paper.
What's the date on the thirtieth? Or the, the date on Thursday?
Twenty-eighth, I think. Yeah, twenty-eighth.
We, we would just go that week, so whatever you decide, come on in, we'll move it up.
They, they agreed to it. They heard it. They agreed to it. We just write that little addendum. If that's what he wants, hand it to him.
Well, that's what I don't understand. If everybody's in agreement, why are they balking at the dollar thirty-nine if every, we all agree?
I think they just, they just did not know when it was taking place. And that we, we had moved forward with it because we've not told them.
When I ordered a new car, I had a pretty good idea what I was gonna have.
They oughta know when it took effect because their sewer surcharges went down.
Yeah.
They oughta know when it took effect. They even got a dollar.
They were fine with the new rates for the surcharge rates and they were both voting on it at the same time.
So-
It's, it's actually the same motion.
Yes.
Right. It's all the same thing.
So I would think the price took effect at the same time.
So we not been charging surcharge rates for the last few months?
We've not been charging them at the rate we did.
We've been charging-
Eight hundred thousand, they would give them the one point one.
Correct. That was my next question.
I mean, they're fine with that, but they don't wanna pay the dollar thirty-nine. The one point three nine.
Right. No. It's not saying that he's not willing to pay the one point three nine. He knows that, that they agreed to. He just didn't realize that it was starting now versus later on in the year.
That, that was in March the thirteenth.
There's no way you couldn't have known because the surcharge went from seventy-five thousand dollars down to twenty-five hundred.
It was all in one motion. And I don't, I don't know rocket science, but if this bill's going down, you can expect the other ones as well. I think if you meet with them again and start deliberating almost-
I don't think we're gonna deliberate.
Well, maybe that's not the appropriate word. But it, it emasculates the decision that both of these boards made if we go backwards on this. Now, yes, I think Craft is important in the community and I know they do a lot, but someone's gotta stand up to them eventually, which Joe says. It's a multi-billion dollar company, but we're a little tiny village. You know?
I, I, I didn't know one piece Mike that I find interesting, and that is, Donnie, what you said. I don't have a problem going back the old way if that's what they want. And we'll nail it for the, the higher surcharge and move forward that way because I gotta believe we'd be further ahead that way. I can't believe we wouldn't be.
Well, a lot of the surcharge rate decrease was because their BODs went way down when the MVBR, it isn't all flow.
Right.
The flow is actually, most of that high surcharges were because of high BODs until the MVBR was in line. So actually the, it had some impact, a full difference, but a lot of it was their BODs went down.
So it wasn't us not having the same surcharge scale? It was that they actually corrected what they were putting in-
No, the scale went down. Now, now they're held at fifteen hundred instead of thirty-seven hundred for BOD. And their plant is able to do it. If they don't, if they're over fifteen hundred, they're gonna be charged.
They can't cherry pick what parts of this they weigh. It's an all or nothing deal. And you know, you know your rates went down as far as the sewer, that's great. You can expect the others to go up too. And if they didn't understand that, they gotta have someone at meetings that understands and takes notes a little bit better.
That's fine. So is there anyone who would love to attend a meeting next, not tomorrow, Thursday morning, but the following Thursday morning at nine o'clock here?
That's a week from tomorrow.
Yep. Twenty?
I can go.
Evan, Joe? I'm sorry. Evan, I was saying Evan, me, but I'm just looking at faces to make sure that there's nobody else who-
Don, Joe.
Yep, Joe's there. And myself?
Anybody else that wants to, we're welcome.
Right? Welcome to join us.
I'll be there.
And Donnie. Okay.
You have to keep it on the corner.
Yeah, keep it to, to your board.
Yeah. Tom, are you available that day?
If you want me to be there, I can be there.
That would be a yes.
Okay. Then can I ask, please do, going back to the March thirteenth meeting, we had, we were told that for the proposed water and sewer rate in two thousand eighteen, nineteen, the decision has to be given by May the first. So did you enact on it as a village board for the reason?
If we approve the new water rate by May first, and that, I have this here. And where it's down, it's what it wants to actually. And that was, that was proposed. Did we? This, I don't know who this came from.
Oh, this is just something I gave the municipal board quite a while back to-
Did we get that as well?
No.
That was just a recommendation.
That was just a recommendation that I gave the municipal board. If that's twenty-four hundred units per every facility.
The board of trustees didn't see that.
Well, that was just something you were throwing out there for us to think about.
Just giving some suggestions.
This was embarrassed, it was told to us that the decision had been made by May first. So my thought was that.
Yeah, we would've had to add a public hearing in order to have it affect them.
It seems anything down.
If you do anything now on water, you'd have to have a public hearing and it couldn't go into effect until November.
May.
The next May.
No, the next.
Yeah, billing now for November.
Right.
No, I'm saying-
It would come out on the next May bill because right now we've already started the water electric floor. Or the water tallying. Okay.
It would have started.
Okay.
Any charges that you made, water or sewer, don't go into effect.
So that floor is for all users. Because Craft is a monthly user. That can be changed.
Right. I realized that. We discussed the other rate too there.
I'm, I don't have that. So we'll discuss moving forward at our, with Craft, with memorandum of some understandings and whatever. Meeting Thursday morning?
That's when I'll write the pre-treatment permit letter when we know. After we, Thursday.
Write what we want.
Yeah, I was gonna-
That's right here, next to you.
Yes. Is it possible to just do our bond resolution and finish that out? Yeah. So I guess with all of this discussion, are we okay approving the amended and restated bond resolution? For our project costs?
I believe so.
Something, yeah, amount not received eighteen nine fourteen nine ninety-four.
Motion in forty cents.
Yeah, in forty cents. Roll call.
We're gonna do a motion first, right?
We have a motion and a roll call.
A motion. How many, a motion?
Second.
Dan, thank you, Ed. All in favor, Dan?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Ed?
Yes.
I did that after, so I'm supposed to ask you guys.
Well, we already said we are-
We already read the message. At the last meeting. Oh, sorry, it's the end of this, so we got this one. So bid awards, we are able to, we are not able to-
Right, we're gonna, we're gonna do that letter if it can. Talk about, you can do a formal award once the bond reservation is finalized.
Are you all in agreement that these are the bids that should be accepted by the project?
Three. Anybody wanna make a motion if we agree? Second.
I, I can't.
That's all right. Dorothy made a motion to agree to the lowest bid prices and contractors as are stated in by most paperwork.
Okay.
And-
All in favor? Second.
You have to accept it.
Municipal Board recommends adhering to opposition.
So when we're given the go-ahead legally with after all of the necessary paperwork, the waiting time, we can move forward with that?
In the meantime, we'll get that letter if that's finalized, we assign.
Okay. All right. Is there anything else that we need to do or discuss?
Until after Thursday.
What time?
Nine o'clock?
No, you can do it next Thursday.
Yep.
By the morning. Well, whatever time you say.
Nine o'clock.
Right?
Where are we on the rates?
So-
Rates?
With which rates? Craft rates or residential rates?
I thought they were gonna list us rates for five streets. On both of them, actually. I know Brian said we were paying on sewer. I mean, we got, maybe if we're gonna do anything with rates, we gotta buckle up so we can have a public hearing together. We can do that on the letter first.
So are there thoughts on increasing water rates? Right, because water is the site that is the most- Twenty-five percent of projects.
I think there ought to be like a five-year. Could be looked at every year. Each year over the next five years, yeah. Well, that's about the area you're looking at if the reductions that they're talking about really come to pass. It would be about a thirty percent increase over that period of time. So.
Well, do we wanna tie ourselves in at a rate five years? No. Because if they keep using a high amount of rates and rates for no reason.
Yeah, you want, you wanna do it annually.
Annually, yes.
So essentially, to increase water rates for the May bills that come out, that people have already used that amount, will need to be looked at and completed June, July, August, September. And going to effect by August first.
End of September to go from May.
Right, to come, for the October first to-
We'll be reading in October.
April thirty-first.
So by the end of September.
We'll be reading in October. So it's, it would go into effect personally or whatever.
Yeah. Would need to be- No, it would go into effect in May, June.
Yeah, for the next bill.
So we would need, if you wanted to for May increase, we would have to have your decision. I would say probably by September because we'll be reading in October. We're reading in October.
Because it's not in November anymore.
Right, right.
Wouldn't the-
But we can't start, November first we start charging for the May bill. So I have to have everything enacted before that. Okay?
That's what I meant, November first.
And that, we did just charge the time of signing.
And yes, we are, we still know it from what we saw in our review of Redwood.
The board of trustees, I don't know why they're confused about Redwood.
Redwood had, had not changed.
They're thirty percent.
There's still the mercy.
They call the audit.
It won't be, it won't be approved, just.
Anything else you need towards four, five streets or sewer or? I do know that I reached out to Empire State Development. Steve Plunk, right, is he at Empire State Development?
Yeah, so.
Book shares.
Too many letters.
Right?
Yeah.
And asked about- And asked about our application to their office. They are awaiting some more information on specifically what our Phase Two will consist of and how much that cost might be to be able to process those numbers for. Possibility of, of grant approval or, or you wanna. For, for an application for funding. Just so you know. Is that correctly stated?
I think so. We're continuing to work on that sewer side, right?
Yeah, we still regret that we. Submission was made to D E C. We're waiting for their feedback, whether it's forward, the process has already started.
Correct. So, we're in the middle of that process and I let him know that we were working on it and he would be one of the first to know if we had any information. Anybody have any other questions for five streets or water or sewer while we're all here together? You guys can run if you can.
I just want a motion to dismiss them.
I make a motion, we adjourn, our, our, this need.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, you can stay till eleven with us if you don't.
No, because now we're gonna. Are you ready? Buckle up, baby.
We'll be back.
Go.
Okay. So. First thing we need to do, asking the board to open up a public hearing for the local law for a joint planning and zoning board.
Second.
Thank you Charlie, all in favor?
Aye.
Can I also go ahead and open the next law?
You may.
I make a motion to open the next law about street debris which was treatment plant's focal area.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hold. Okay, so both of us are open. Any public comments? In regard to combining our planning and zoning board of appeals boards with the town? Or creating a law that. Encourages people to take care of their street debris by not putting it in the roadway? Or on the sidewalk, blocking either of those areas until we are able to pick it up? And for non-commercial, actually I should say for resident delivery use. The waste water treatment plant, this focal area. Did I state those correctly?
Not my law.
No, but I'm making sure that, that everything is worded that is going to work for you, I know we went through it last time.
Yeah, I like it.
Just that we know commercial, tree removal, the landscape introduction, hauling and dumping.
That's the big one because we're gonna have to close that. Because we're getting commercial debris. Like crazy. Monday morning, it takes four or five guys most of the day to empty that bin. Because commercial haulers are coming in and dumping.
And I, I've noticed that a lot of debris out in the village right now, of large brush and shrubs and that kind of stuff. I can't believe, couldn't be done in the spring, it's what is supposed to be picked up, I think that's unfair to Tom and his crew. I've noticed at one particular place right now, down near his plant, with a lot of brush and, brush and refuge out that wasn't, didn't happen because of a storm.
We're, the cleanup for the brush is complete. Memorial Day weekend was the last day. Hence, it's on the webpage, it was discussed during budget, that we weren't going to be doing pickup in the summer months. That's why, that's one of the purposes of having the, the location down at the sewer plant, if you recall, Mary, I mean, it was your idea.
Yeah.
So.
Tom's had a lot of new hires in the last few weeks. And one of them came to me and said, anybody in the village that doesn't take the bet in this village work, they got another thing coming. That came from somebody I respect as a worker. So, anybody in here that knows, probably knows what I'm talking about, man. I appreciated that comment.
So, we, we are not even doing like the first Friday event every month or anything, we are not doing it all?
No, it was, that's what we discussed in the budget meeting, that was, that money was taken out of the budget.
That's fine. So, I need to make sure that I contact media sources and let them know that.
Mr. Almeyer actually quoted it to me before the meeting started, he knew.
Correct, but I need, like, we need to publicize it and have it out there to remind people.
I just seen it on the website today, I'm looking for the agenda.
Right, but I don't think people frequent the village website, so we need to. Yeah, okay.
They call.
So, it'll be again for fall, fall week.
Well, you're gonna let them take it down there by themselves in the middle of the.
Yes.
Oh, yeah. I think myself.
But the bad thing about that is, we've tried it before. When I was, that's why I wanted to say to you. Because you get everybody from the town of Watson, town of Lavelle growing tough down there, not the village. That's the way you get someone. And unfortunately, you don't have, unfortunately, you don't even pay for it to get rid of it, right? You aren't have to pay for it to get rid of it.
Yeah.
We, we pay for it every Monday morning when we haul.
Oh, but I mean, you aren't paying somebody to chip it.
Last year, it, we got right to the point where we were going to have to hire somebody to do it, it was gonna be eighteen thousand.
That's why, that's why we stopped going in there on weekends or anything when the gates open.
Right.
Because, like I said, people from the town of Lavelle, Watson, they're native village residents, bringing in there.
It's, it's an abused privilege because it's supposed to be brushed from storms and trimmings. But it's trees, people are bringing butt logs down that are three feet diameter and dumping them. That didn't come down in a pickup truck. You know, stumps and stumps, shrubs being ripped out of the ground and thrown down there. The recycler will not haul that stuff, they actually push, they pick that off and put it to the side and then we have to take care of it. Because their machine can't bust the stumps.
So, it's the same rule with the six inches in diameter, right? Isn't that what our loss has? Or no?
I believe it's four. Because if you put four, you'll get eight.
Did you want me to give that to the media? Or you're going to?
I think I can do it.
Okay.
I just wanna understand, you're saying, you know, even if there's a storm, you're not gonna pick the stuff up?
No, Donnie, if there's a storm, we will go do it.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Start myself.
Just keeping against the piles of road during the, I'm gonna tell you, they said the last wind knock, no. Something terrible.
Is there any reason why we gotta leave these two public hearings open, nobody's gonna comment, I have to try to make a motion to close it and vote on this?
I think we should leave them open for at least thirty, ten minutes to an hour.
Okay.
Just in case somebody shows up.
Alright.
We'll be rushed. We'll be here.
As long as we don't forget.
Any other public comment on either of those while we're here? Alright, approval of the May fifteenth? Oh, we already approved what we was gonna, never mind, sorry. Approval of the vouchers.
Rule of the vouchers, bear with me, we have two separate fiscal years here. So, general fund, in the amount of, can I make the motion for all of them? This would be for.
Fifteen?
This is fifteen, oh fifteen, bingo. Twenty-five thousand, four hundred and twenty-six dollars and fourteen cents. For number double zero one, general fund, it's seventy-six thousand, nine hundred and ninety-six dollars and thirty cents. For the water fund, number zero fifteen. In the amount of fifty-five thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine dollars, thirty-four cents. Water fund, number zero zero one. Sixty-one thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars and seventy-five cents. Sewer fund, number zero one five. In the amount of twenty-two thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars and seventy-seven cents. And number zero zero one under the sewer fund, in the amount of twenty-five thousand, eighty-one dollars, forty-eight cents. And we only have one for the capital fund, and that's number zero zero one. And that's in the amount of nine thousand, two hundred and ninety-eight dollars and thirteen cents, and I move the whole kit and kaboodle.
I'll second the whole kit and kaboodle.
Thank you Charlie, thank you Ed, any questions? All in favor? So, we're pretty much all set with waste water treatment plant upgrades and things of that nature, do we need to, do we forget anything? I hope not, we're all set there.
On five streets, you still need to authorize you to sign the emergency petition for two weekends.
That's just right here, right?
That is, yep.
Okay. Yep, it, there are two names, am I supposed to state those names?
Sure.
Estate of John C. Hershey and. Jose A. Melendez Junior. That we continue with our eminent domain process.
The motion to authorize Donna to sign the petition to start the process.
I'll make the motion to authorize Donna to sign to start the process.
I'll second it.
So, if I sign this, you can authorize it for me?
I can do that, yeah. And I'll go over it tomorrow, tomorrow.
Sorry.
All in favor? Aye.
I should just skip these board meetings.
Opposed.
Opposed or abstained? Pass that back on to. Anything else with five streets or? Phase two or, there's one more, the national grid easement I sent out. Actually, today, I postmarked it, so it'll go out tomorrow. And the property owner on water street and East State Street, I think we're all set there. I caught him this morning, so I think he's gonna sign that and then get back in.
So, there's just those two outstanding, that's it?
Anything else that we're forgetting? We're all set with the county, right, we're all set for the bridge?
I see an email about an I M A going back and forth, are you involved in that, no?
No, I'll say I haven't seen that, but I thought that we, like Mark made it sound like we were good to go.
Yeah, I just, I was kinda closing the loop on it a couple of weeks ago and they asked for a PDF or something, so I think just to close that by.
That's alright, that would be the only one and whatever agreement we need with the railroad.
That, that sent the fourth one along, didn't it? Yeah, all agreements are still, I just want to move on to work, so.
Okay, but we don't have a here to sign yet, right? Do we have to sign with the village?
Yeah.
Do we make sure that you see C. Joe?
Yeah. Have you already signed the other three months, do you have? Yeah, the railroad agreements.
Like with the pipeline project?
On the five streets.
I don't remember seeing a railroad here to come across, do you?
We need, we need to get them all, so we can get them executed, we got one, right?
Do you remember that at all, when you?
I'm just sitting here thinking, what are we talking about?
He'll follow up.
I don't think so. Sorry. It's not ringing a bell?
No, they're all set, it's gonna ring a phone one. Yeah. Signed, so. So, so we should be forwarding everything to Joe now? Yeah. Okay, that may be where, where they're at. Yeah, I think so. So, is that? Just to be clear then, is, is people completely removed from the process now or?
No, Mark's finishing up certain aspects of the resolution and eminent domain and that sort of thing. But you should just keep this both in the loop.
Okay.
Better than one.
Thank you. Anything else on that that we're? That we have forgotten about? So. Normal fire department fire hall.
Does that need to stay on there, I think we're all set.
I'll say, I thought we were all set with the agreements that we already had.
Have you talked? We, Mary, we discussed it at the last meeting and I think maybe you said you were gonna go back and say, the board was pretty much in agreement with that and based on the discussion about building maintenance, everything was, our due service was good.
Right?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, you're not going with the, the additional charges to the other towns or, I thought that's where we left that. You're not doing that?
If you can't, you definitely, it's time to do, redo the agreements.
Okay. So, it'll be ten years from now?
No, that's, on the annual.
Oh, no, no, contracts, correct, that's a totally separate.
Okay.
But with their use of the building and them maintaining the building and so on and so forth. That agreement that was already kind of renewed itself, does that make sense?
Yes, I'm.
We're good with that.
Something else, okay?
So, we, and we can take that right off, yes? Think of that off the agenda? Okay.
And, and so, when? Do you want it back on like September or, because that's when the contracts run down for towns?
Right, well, I think that's something we can figure out.
If I recall right. Part of the discussion was, they were making the buildings and, and the, the building, I guess there's more on building there. But they did not wanna see. An increase in the other towns. You were at that meeting, correct, Don? I believe that's what was said. That you'd rate, you'd have chicken barbecues or do whatever you had to do to make up the difference. You wanted to leave the contract with all the towns the way it was. And I remember saying, as far as I was concerned, the fire department was happy doing that and it created camaraderie for them. I personally didn't have a problem with it. But, that's, that doesn't mean that I'm just one person on board. But I thought that it was a very productive meeting and the fire department, I thought, was willing to go above and beyond what needed to be, uh, go above and beyond and I was, I was, I was extremely pleased. So. But that's the way I understood it. We didn't take any minutes, we didn't write any notes.
No, but it was discussed in our, at our last board meeting, I think, that we agreed with the, the agreement that was renewed itself, it's a ten-year agreement. That was already in place.
I think we're talking about two different.
Correct.
Yeah.
And that we would, we would reevaluate what our costs, like the town of Lavelle just sent us a bill for two thousand one hundred or two thousand five hundred dollars to help pay for the workman's comp.
What, what I'm saying?
Not included in their budget.
The, the budget for the fire department comes to me usually in September. And so, that's when you want it re-added? You don't want it re-added at all?
Donnie, I know, I know you're only one member, but when it comes to the workman's comp, that's really not part of the building and that should probably be shared by all the towns and they're being billed for it, and it's not a large amount.
Yeah, that would work in the comp in our budget if you look at it.
So, so there's gonna be an increase?
This, this is what you guys are getting, that we always understood that the fire department. This, this is what you guys are getting, that we always understood that the fire department, that the county was paying. That we go through their documents and anything with any physicals or any problems. And we found out that Randy sent you the bill, where the village was paying it all at once. Well, now, now you gotta split up, so it's not costing you as much as it was. But we didn't understand you guys were paying it all.
We, no, nobody did.
It's just a recent change that the county did, based on their reliance on control of things that's out there. And to my knowledge, it's the only county that's doing it.
Well, well, I'll tell you, it is nice that they brought it, that, that, that that changed, because it was seven thousand three hundred or eighty-three hundred or something this past year. The year before that, the village alone paid ninety-nine hundred.
Back years.
So, it's nice to have that brought to our attention, because in the future, we should not be the sole bearers of that.
Right, that's what you should be looking at when you do your contracts with the towns. You should be looking at those added costs, where you'd be spread out.
Here's what happened, Joe. About three years ago, when the state came up with the cap, two percent, the county was paying all of the towns' workers' comp. Not the villages, because we were the involuntary form of government. So when this two percent cap came out, they passed on the workers' comp to all towns. And my argument is, they complained about state mandates, and then they passed the mandate on to all the towns that were the bottom feeders, they couldn't do anything about. And I don't know that that's when this happened with the fire department also.
No, well.
This just happened this past year.
But, and there were, there were years, like five or six years ago, I think their, the workers' comp for the fire department was zero or fifty dollars or two hundred and fifty dollars. It hasn't always been that much. It goes by how, you know, how many incidents happen.
Goes by experience, Mark, yes.
Right. So, but we didn't know that we were paying that, because we pay a high amount anyways, because we have past employees who are on disability. So, you know.
The increased amount that you're paying because of the fire plan, should be passed along in the fire department?
Yes.
And the town did that. That's what they got.
Correct.
The town split it up, I, uh, they were waiting for it. They've already did, that's what they did to you.
There's one town who's refusing to pay it, because it was not in the contract. So, my.
It's not, it's not in, it's not in anybody's contract. It's the state law that says they gotta pay compensation for, in the fire department.
Right, but it wasn't in their contract, so he's refusing.
You'll have to.
So we might have to, we'll treat those. So we'll take it off and put it.
So, yeah, we'll take it off for now, we'll revisit it when it's, when it's budget time, when the bidding contract time with the other ones. Okay. Veterans park and fire department cameras. I know that that was something that, they, the fire department had their cameras, looked at us as a wiring issue to get our cameras to work. I know that we discussed whether or not we wanted to keep them or get different ones.
The fee is the same. They don't, they were not a deep reason. It was like forty-eight hundred dollars to do new cameras. We don't have it in our budget.
Right. So do we wanna pay the six or seven hundred dollars to fix what we currently got there, or no?
Doesn't work. I mean, the one time that the police actually needed it, it couldn't, it couldn't be used, unless somebody's standing right under the camera.
Do you know who looked at it, Donna?
The company, uh, can't think of the name of the company, but I was there, it wasn't. The wires, the wires bad from inside up to the top.
I think it's Stat or something, yeah.
Was it Stat?
I don't remember who it was, the truck it was.
NCC's system? BAS?
I guess my thought is, I just wanted to look back to see who originally installed it, and get a quote from that company. Because I'm thinking it was Stat that originally installed it.
Who's budget, who's budget was?
It came out of the village.
Yeah, the police department?
It came through the police, the money came through the police department.
Well, they each have a, a Stat account, PD and PDW.
It was, uh, it was forfeiture money used. Got from Land Motors.
From the DA's office, you're right.
So who monitors now? Nobody.
The police department, spoke to them, up and on.
Or if an incident happens, they're there so they can go back and look, but it doesn't really work, because.
I just think we could get it done. I think Stat installed it, I think they can then fix the wires for a lot less than eight hundred bucks.
That was what they gave the quote to the fire department for.
Yeah, but I'm saying, was it Stat that gave them that quote?
I think it was, though, but I'm not sure.
I mean, I just think you should look and see who installed them, and get a quote from that company.
Think, not to beat this, but I spoke with Fair Board, or representative that does maintenance at the fairgrounds, and they're, they have set up a Wi-Fi that covers the entire fairgrounds, and they are integrating a security system into it. And I was talking with them the other day, showed it to me, and they're looking at cameras right along the same lines that what we're looking at. And they set up antennas throughout the fairgrounds, so that they have a full signal. We might be able to do the exact same thing in the village. We were talking about covering the sewer plant, the, both of the playgrounds, the four corners, the, the air, the bandstand at the veterans' park, the tennis courts, the fire department. I think that's something that we could possibly work with the Fair Board, and they may actually be able to help us do it. And it was very minimal cost.
Really?
Yes. High-quality cameras. But I think it's something that we, probably we would wanna plan out for the next fiscal year.
Right.
And let, let's see how it works in the fair.
So, so we're gonna say, but right now, we're not gonna worry about it, because even if, even when they're on, it's really not helpful.
Yeah.
Look at it for next year, and possibly get more information of how that worked with the fairgrounds this year. Yes? So we can take that off the agenda as well? Okay. Uh, we discussed the poly unit, so we're all set with that. Everyone agree? Okay, so we're up to the local laws, it's been a half an hour, I don't know. I won't wait till Charlie to come back.
Since you're here, this advertised, I'm sorry, five, I think you could say.
So any further public comment or discussion in regard to the Joint Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals with the town, or the street debris law and, um, use of our debris area on the sewer treatment plant? I would make a motion to close the joint zoning and planning boards.
Second.
Thank you, Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Before you act on the motion around the local laws, on maybe complying with SEACR, and a very short form EAF is one of them, we just need to go through Part Two, and answer the questions about any potential impact that the laws have.
I've never done this before.
But I'm just, you should, every time you do a local law, unless it's determined that, that the action is a, what they call a Type II action, which doesn't require any review. But I don't think either one of these is on the Type II list.
All right.
So I, I can go through these questions fairly quickly with you.
Okay.
Make, make the suggested answers, and unless you disagree with these answers, we can issue a negative declaration. And I will do the, basically, basically for both of them at the same time. If you disagree with the answers for either one of them, let me know. Will the proposed action create material conflict with an adoptively used plan or zoning regulation? I'd say no. Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land?
No.
Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental chara- characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area? Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking, or walking? I'd say no. Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and fails to incorporate reasonable available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? No. Will the proposed action impact existing public private water supplies or public private wastewater treatment utilities? Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic agricultural, architectural, or aesthetic resources?
No.
Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources? Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? Since the answer to all those were no, you should, uh, adopt a motion, she's, make a motion to adopt a negative declaration.
I make that motion to adopt.
For both of them?
For both of them.
Yeah.
Thank you, Charlie. Thank you, Ed. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Then you can add another request.
Okay.
I make a mo- a motion for local law, combining the joint zoning and planning boards with the town law.
Thank you, Dan. I would second that. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I just have one thing on that, so. I gave Pam a copy of the town's local law that they have to adopt also. And tomorrow is their board meeting, and they're hoping to schedule their public hearing for the month of July on their local law. And then hopefully, we'll move forward, maybe have this in place by August, to the local law.
Our office would love that.
I don't have, I don't have a motion to close the local law, I can't either.
We only did one of them.
No, we only have one, so now we're on the street debris. You have the first motion though, right? Mm-hmm. Okay. So I make a motion to close the local law, public transport, street debris law?
Second.
Thank you, Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And we already did the SEACR on that. I've never done a SEACR before in our local laws.
We will be from now on.
I'm sorry, I feel like, I'm like, oh, sorry. Any further discussion on this law? I would make a mo-
Just.
Go ahead.
I think Tom's getting the sign made, put up down there. Notify people, but I'm just wondering, if I don't, Tom and I have talked it, but we just wondered if maybe we oughta have a camera or two down there, and feed them to our public works building, you know? Just to see, catch violators. We're mainly thinking like contractors and things that bring us up in that weekend. So I don't know if the board thinks we'll die.
I think so, but I think if we're gonna do a system, we should try and do a system throughout, I think that's something that we're. We don't have cameras down there at all, right?
No.
Do we have a?
Thing is, down there, I don't think you need the real high-resolution ones, because it's right there, close, it's almost, you can be able to pick up a fleet number, that's really all you need. That's the section of the vehicle.
What we need to have, well, is there an antenna that can bounce it back to here? We would need to have antenna power.
You can feed right out of the white barn. And put your unit right in there, just like a camera on the outside of a barn.
Yeah, but where does the camera go to?
It would go right back into your, you could have a recorder right inside the white barn, picking up. Actually, believe it or not, you can buy a four cam, I'm not sure how good they are, but you can buy a four camera unit with a controller and everything that records for like two hundred and seventy bucks, or however it's great. How good they are, but. I mean, I'm just trying to give you something that where the expense is not.
Right, but I'm just saying, so these cameras here record into a huge thing in that, really.
It's the whole building, though.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, but it cycles every three days, so I'm just wondering if, I'm just wondering, did we at one time set up antennas to have our stuff?
I think they're still up there, but I don't know.
I don't know if they work.
They don't work.
They don't work, they're good.
I don't think they ever work.
Okay. So you wanna, you wanna look into that, Joe? I guess I just wonder, yeah. Where it would back up to and where it would. I mean, I know the pause right there in the garage, but where it would back up to, that it.
The unit, we could put a unit right inside the white barn, and we're back. We just have to check that unit on a regular basis.
That's definitely a regular basis.
I mean, either the sewer plant operator, or the gentleman who's out checking, that's whatever. Probably on a daily or every other day basis.
Somebody down, how long we down?
No, you wouldn't have, it'd be set up when they would operate for, you know, forty-eight hours or more, without having to be checked.
Okay, so you're gonna do that.
Get more information on the cameras and the state.
Yep, okay.
I will make a motion to set up your local law.
Thank you, Ed. I would second the street debris law. Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Go ahead, we can go back.
Never mind.
What?
I, it's, we're good. I wondered if we would, if it made sense to set the timeframe on this for Memorial Day weekend, stops in the fall when it starts.
The October fifteenth or something?
I haven't thought through it, just about, I just thought about it, so I, I wouldn't change it. I would, don't throw it in there just for the sake of putting it in, that's why I said, don't. We'll just keep, we'll just keep doing the notice the way that we do.
But you wanna?
No, I don't.
Okay. When the, Ed made the motion and I seconded for the acceptance of our debris law, and all were in favor. Right? So zoning amendments is something that we had discussed, and I believe that this is in reference to the, um, area down on Shady Avenue? Are there other zoning amendments in here? Because we have it in two different places. I handed out last time, and we said we would ask the board members about that being an auto-commercial zone, like a lot of our other places are. And we got an email back from one member, um, stating that he is in agreement with that, and nobody else responded. I don't know if you would like to sell that possible public hearing on changing that zoning area? Would probably allow for, for the development of current businesses in that location, or further expansion of current businesses in that location.
I make a motion if we schedule a public hearing for our July meeting for the zoning amendments.
July eighteenth?
Mm-hmm. Oh, that's a fair week.
It is fair week.
Are we going to meet a week ahead or a week behind?
I say we usually don't meet during fair week, do we?
What do we meet at? July a lot of? The one day before.
Other people's thoughts.
What about one day after? What do I want to be after? The twenty-fifth?
You want to do it the twenty-fifth, you're available to tell them that? Does anybody get closer than that?
Twenty-fifth?
Pressure column, you're electronic?
I'll be at the hospital with Henry.
But, and that's okay, I'm really, I'm a little, I'm a little anxious.
Do we wanna, do we wanna move it to the twenty-fifth, or would we like to keep it on the eighteenth? I guess is the question.
I'm good with the eighteenth, I just thought we've never done a fair week.
I'd say we, we usually do take off fair week.
But I can read that.
So, Charlie, what are your thoughts on that?
I you can have it, you know, if I can't be here, it's no big deal. I don't think we're gonna have any more than pressing, it must be whatever.
I mean, I don't have a problem with the eighteen or the twenty, but that's, this doesn't. A lot of, a lot of days are always fair.
So we'll keep it the eighteenth? Yep.
So I make a motion to have the public hearing on the eighteenth for the zoning.
That's right.
Is our parking available for us here, fair week, or do they park here?
Should be.
You can take a shuttle.
Well, I'll park at your house?
Oh, yeah.
We'll carpool for the remaining.
I'll, I'll be parked off.
Okay. So, I probably need to get you, do you have that information, Joe?
I don't think I do, but if you can send it to me.
Okay. So the auto-commercial zone.
I have all your originals too, if I've got.
My originals?
Perfect.
Do you mind that? The originals? Okay. Somebody needs to second Dan. Okay, I would second Dan with the public hearing on the eighteenth at five P.M. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Okay. So a summer rep proposal, do you all have that? I feel like I emailed it out.
Just, just a point on that zoning change, you are gonna have to forward that to county planning for their review and recommendation, so. You know, you don't have to do that now, but if you wanna refer to county planning, you can probably do it some things.
That'd be great. There'll be a couple more coming up, so you might wanna do it with that. Couple more, but I don't know if they hold that, hold up, the joint board issue? We don't want anything like that to happen. No.
No.
I mean, we can, we can have a public hearing and then forward it to county planning. Just can't act on it until we do it.
Right, or we can just send it to county planning and say this is our and whenever we hear back from them, we can make it.
Right.
Right?
Yep.
Okay.
Am I doing that as well?
Why don't you figure it out, Dan, and I think we have to get it drafted first before we can.
Okay. Okay. Summer rep proposal, two thousand eighteen. It, um, will be a full four-week program. And he has broken down here all the different, um, costs to the program. That is all of the staffing for the program for the breakdown. For the recreation part, or recreation part, it's eleven hundred. For the swim part is also eleven hundred. They have supplies, three thousand, um.
Did the budget change on this down here, what they, what we allowed?
No, well, we, we have in our budget twenty-five thousand.
Right.
Um, you see, the total cost for level summer recreation is twenty-eight thousand. They are planning on absorbing um, three thousand four hundred and forty of that. So, Dan and I, and I think Ed, we've had some email discussions back and forth of you know, what would it cost to add one more week? Randy Shell actually asked, what about, um, continuing with one more week of just the water aerobics in the morning, the, the couple classes that come in in the morning, of course, we free swim and water aerobics, just because, um, he has to hit some boat halls. I don't think it would be that much more because it would only be a couple of hours every day. But I don't have a full number on that yet. Uh, but at this point in time, they're planning on just a four-week program and possibly looking at other funding sources for next year to turn to a five or six-week program. Um, and even possibly doing a county-wide program. And he will be coordinating those aspects of funding sources and things of that nature.
We met as a, Double Play met as a board end of last month. Um, and I had a separate meeting with him, and I can kind of base three months on course, but it'll help.
I know they've been hiring, and there are over a hundred kids signed up already for summer rep, so.
Pam will probably have this interest in this, but we budgeted twenty-five thousand.
Is that our total share, or does that twenty-five thousand include the town's share?
Correct.
It does include the town's share?
Yep, we pay seventy-six percent of that, and they pay twenty-four percent, or whatever the percentage is, of the twenty-five thousand. Yep. So I guess I would ask if you are in agreement to accept this proposal and we can look forward, working with Double Play again for a productive program?
I would make a motion to accept it moving forward, because I had residents call me last year with positive feedback on the programs.
I'll second.
Thank you, Joe, thank you, Dan, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Um, very family reunion is happening this year, so a one-hundred family reunion. And Irene Mancer, who lives on Jackson Street, has attended every single one of those family reunions. By the way, I think she is a hundred and two this year. Um, so they have filled out an application to use for part. They provided a additional certificate of insurance, right?
Yes, they have a band.
Yep. They're planning on having a band and having, um, community invited to this wonderful, awesome event. And they're asking that we proclaim the second weekend of July two thousand eighteen as a one-hundred family, very family reunion weekend. Back of the weekend of July, I think it's July fourteenth, is that Saturday, it's not a Saturday? Yeah, I'd love a motion to be able to silence.
That's why I was asking. I'll make a motion to re- declare that weekend, uh, a very rich city, it's not that, a very family reunion.
Second.
Thank you, Charlie. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Thank you.